Please stand to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. At this time, meeting in the Greensburg City Council is called to order. Anybody please call to roll?
Jamie Kane?
Here.
Mark Carmen?
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Here.
Rodney King?
Here.
Luke Kinsey?
Here.
Daryl Poling? Daryl Tressler?
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from May 14 and May 15's executive session. Any edits, additions, or corrections to those? If not, those will stand approved as presented. There was an update to the ordinance from last time that was passed on first reading. It includes two provisions that Chris made that ties the fees to the alley and street vacation to actual cost incurred in that roundabout area.
Yeah, I changed, I added a sentence to the wherefore paragraphs that says that it is linked to actual costs reasonably calculated to link to actual costs. And then I added a specific sentence to that effect in the actual ordinance language itself down below. So I think that was encompassing what you were asking for Jamie to kind of make sure that people understand that this is not something that's just willy-nilly changed, but that is actually linked to efficiently and effectively calculating costs related to the enforcement and administration of those items.
Thank you. I'll make a motion we pass 2024-10 on the second reading. Is it? Yeah, that's right.
Motion's been made by Jamie.
On second.
Second by Daryl. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. Thank you. John Ryan with Veritas Group is here this evening with an update from our complex project. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. All right, good evening, Council. Hopefully it stops making that noise. That's kind of annoying. All right, there we go. Good. Good evening. Got another update for the month of June. Hopefully will be one of our last. I anticipate maybe one more after this, just to close out the project, but wanted to run through things here. I know that you guys were out on site last Friday to, some of you were, to review what's been going on out on site. Things are really going to start taking shape here in the next few weeks as far as the interiors of the buildings go and specifics to the fire station. So we'll go ahead and jump in here on the site work update. As you guys can see from this drone photo I took earlier, the site is really starting to take shape now that the asphalt is completed. Top coat will be done tomorrow. The striping in the remaining areas, the shared parking lot striping has been done, and Mark's lot as well. But Bear Shell will be completed tomorrow, which is good news and will look really good just from an entrance standpoint. Site seating, I know it's hard to tell from this drone video, but most of the site has been seeded and strawed in many of the areas and will really start to look good once it starts turning green. And then in regards to landscaping, I do anticipate the rest of the trees and the shrubs and all that to be completed by the end of next week. So that will wrap up the whole landscaping component. Street Department update, really not a lot has happened at the Street Department. They are waiting for fiber at the fire station, given their dark fiber run off of the fire station service. I'm anticipating from Greg Plank that that service will be lit on the 24th of June, which in that point, that will allow them to be able to make the rest of their connections and terminations and will ultimately allow us to get the fire alarm signed up on and a certificate of occupancy there. So we are anticipating and hoping for a certificate of occupancy late June, given the fiber run on the 24th. The furniture has been completed. As I'm sure you guys saw on the walk on Friday, the generator is being worked on currently. It is on site and they are hoping to have that commissioned the end of this week. That was really the only thing we were tracking as we are in many projects from a procurement issue for the Street Department project. So a few photos from the Street Department, one showing the maintenance bay with the truck lift in there and some other owner furnished equipment, the other being the corridor space showing all of the furniture and flooring completed. The conference room table is also done in there, too. Onto the fire station project. As you guys can see from this photo, I know it looks like there's a lot left to do over there. Really, the other elevations outside of what you see here, which is the south elevation, are nearly completed. There's some odds and ends that need to be taken care of as far as the shell and facade goes. But the south side, we are anticipating to have those four-fold doors on Friday this week, with likely an install starting on Monday of next week. That's roughly going to be a four to five-day process in order to get those four folds on the south elevation. The north overhead doors are completed and we are still waiting on the operators for that in order to make those operational. The interior, again, I know when you guys were out on Friday, we weren't able to go look at the epoxy flooring and walk on it as it was still curing, but those are completed. They can be walked on now and will have floor protection on those starting tomorrow as Magna Grip, who's the exhaust extraction contractor, is going to be over there installing their rails for the apparatus exhaust. That'll likely be a week duration as well. So a lot going on inside the apparatus bays, but all good stuff that's happening. We do anticipate finished coat on the walls to be completed end of June, which is really going to rule us into our punch walk that we're going to have with Myron Agum, with DLZ, and obviously us as the owner and the mayor in chief. That likely will be scheduled for July 2nd in order to do that. I do have with me here today Toby Holcomb with Myron Agum. I wanted him to come and share a little bit more in detail about some of the procurement issues we've been having with the elevator specifically and just really talk us through how we anticipate closing out this project and some dates.
Good evening, Board and Mayor. As John mentioned, we're looking at what we're trying to do since we have a hurdle we're trying to get over with the elevator. It's been a manpower issue with union contractors and the elevator contractors in local Indianapolis have been spread out because of lily work and IU help downtown. So we talked with the general manager last Friday with Tiss and Crump Elevator to see if they could bring in someone from the Midwest region, which would be Illinois, Michigan, or Ohio. And if they can make it sooner than Monday, which we are promised Indianapolis will start the elevator, we're going to try and get it started early. But we don't have any promises there. So what we'd like to try and do is, as John went through the two different dates, July 2nd as a building punch that would entail the interiors, the admin area only. The elevator would be sectioned off with partition walls so that they can complete it going up the stairs. But everything else would be completed at that time, including the apparatus bay and the exterior landscaping, the facade, all that should be done by July 2nd so we can go ahead and punch it. But that'll help everybody, the chief and the mayor do, start moving furniture in. We'll do our punch after that, so it's the punch walk through on the 2nd. We will not punch the elevator until July 10th. The reason being there's three weeks worth of work even, including the elevator install plus, then we have to frame back in, we have block work. So it's a three-week process. So to be complete 100%, we're going to have the second walk-through July 10th. And that'd be the earliest somebody would be able to use the elevator. But besides that, everything else is going well. It's going to be a great-looking building, beautiful. We're painting the outside, changing the color. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
What is the worst-case scenario?
For the full, the total building?
Yes.
Right now it's the July 10th. That is our worst case. We should, we'll have the elevator installed. It's the other parts and pieces we have to finish up. So we have to work nights, weekends, which we already are, guys. We're already working 10 hours a day. And they are working Saturdays. And Gale Electric's a little bit behind. They work 10 hours on Saturday also. So they're working over 50 hours a week. So.
And we've finally been committed to by TK. Ultimately, up until now, it's been, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, I'm hoping to have somebody out there. Like, we will have somebody out there on Monday next week, potentially sooner, if we can pull somebody off of another project or if they complete another project early. And that six-day period is really what they've committed to from day one.
Yeah, and the materials are there. They're stored on-site. So we're getting everybody out of the admin area. We're in the sleeping quarters, second floor, and then offices down to the first, the fitness area. We're going to work around, we have to get TK in certain areas to get up and down and get out of the building. So we're going to section those off and everything else be completed. And then we'll go ahead and punch him in a second. But the total overall project would be completed on July 10th.
I appreciate the optimism and you gave me the answer I was looking for.
Good.
Oh, any other questions for Toby? Toby, I know, I appreciate you being here to help explain a little bit of that. I know we've been talking for a few months that we're coming, we're coming, and we just wanted some explanation as to what's our glide path. So thank you for making time for that.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for John? Okay, thanks, Toby.
Awesome. Ultimately, again, no change to budget and what we've discussed already in regards to the occupancy. We're looking at July 10th in order to see about. I do have another, let's see here, drone photo and video, which really is helpful in seeing what's out on site right now. So Bear Shell just got binder course that is not a top coat that will be done tomorrow, a top coat. Seating's done at the retention pond. Grass is already growing. All the landscaping's completed on this far north side. As you can see, all the arbor bodies and junipers have been installed. That's all been mulched to the left on that north elevation of that apron. That's all river rock. Given the slope, we did want a lot of dirt and mulch falling onto the apron of the concrete. So we decided to turn that into river rock. Bay doors are completed on the north side of the apparatus bay, as you just saw. The backlit number one, which will go on that crevice in that cast stone area, is expected to be installed, I believe, the end of this week. They're working on fine grading and seeding in most of these areas. They've already seeded the parking area. Top coat is done. Striping is done in there. That's all been seeded as well, the Street Department. And then that is top coat in the asphalt in the Street Department parking lot area. That concludes my update and drone video. Are there any questions that might interest?
The Broadway Street approach, is it soon to be done as well?
The Acel and the Dcel lane coming in, yes. That'll be completed tomorrow as well.
And then the beacons for?
The solar flashers, I'm working on getting quotes right now from vendors, the solar flashers, specifically the beacons, not the preemption device. Those are typically a pretty quick turnaround. The preemption, we're still working through what equipment we want, because we want to be budget-conscious, but we want to get the right equipment for Chief and his team. We are working through getting quotes from multiple vendors, just to keep people honest right now. And then once we know that equipment, then we'll file the permit and get all of that running within DOT. So that is all in the works currently. The solar panels, while I'm here, I did talk with Greg Marks today. He is anticipating those to be delivered come the fall and then installed in the fall as well. So those are moving as well. Any other questions? Fantastic. Thanks, Sean. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Brian, Director of the Greensburg Decatur County EDC. We've got our annual CF1 approvals.
One small change, and I will make one each. The annual, just a reminder for all incentives and tax abatements awarded by the city, they are required to submit a CF1 report to the city showing the status of the project that was awarded, said incentive. We had received, I say we had received, all of them on time for your approval. That file should have been, or folder should have been shared with all of the city council. As of last night, in talking with the assessor's office, we determined that GCOM had submitted their reports to the assessor, but not to the city. The reason we did not expect anything from GCOM, because by our calculations and their reporting, their abatements have expired. According to the assessor's office, the abatement had started a year after what they had reported it to have started. So they were good for one more year. So what you have before you are the two abatements that are still good for one year. They were delivered on time to the assessor's office at the county, just not to the city. They still are required to submit a city update form, as all of them are, as well as pay the filing fee for that update form. So I would make a recommendation, the other ones, I don't suppose anybody had any questions on or anything like that.
They're not in the packet, really?
What's that?
I don't see them in our packet.
But you shared it in the email, right?
Yeah, the GCOM, yeah, the email, you should have had a link to it. Yeah, the other ones, you should have been sent out to all of them. But then GCOM's what I just passed out would not be in that packet as of yet, for all the reasons I just stated. I would look to the council for advisement as far as how to handle the GCOM, having paid the file, the filing fee, or submitted the update forms.
I'll make a motion that we pass all of them except the GCOM ones, and then we'll come back to those.
I have a phone.
Second.
Motion's been made. Jamie and Vieta also serve on the tax abatement committee, and we talked about these the last time we met a little bit, too. So motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions for Brian? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Then I'd make a motion that we conditionally approve the GCOM abatements as long as they fulfill the requirements, right, within the next 30 days?
I would like the end of the week, but yeah.
Okay, but, or before our next meeting, how about that?
Good. Motion's been made for the two from GCOM.
Second.
Second by name, Vieta. Any other questions for Brian? All those in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Much appreciated.
And Amy, you're ahead of us. Backs of the CF1s, you want to print those out for signatures, or all the other ones?
I get it.
Up next, we have Ally Beck, who's the executive director for Main Street Greensburg. She's got her annual report and update to us. It's been a busy year for Main Street. So Ally, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. Like Josh said, my name is Allison Beck. I'm the executive director of Main Street Greensburg. I formerly served as the admin coordinator, became interim director in November, and officially director in March. We are a public-private entity that was founded in 2005 with a commitment to preserve and support the downtown community. We are an Indiana accredited Main Street and a member of the Main Street America. Our organization is driven by the Main Street Four Point Approach, organization, promotion, design, and economic vitality. So we have a state of downtown from our annual report. We had nine new businesses in 2023. We awarded three facade improvement grants. We had three business expansions, six businesses closed, technically retained one because they reopened in 2024. So I like to say that's five. And we have a 79% occupancy rate and 111 businesses in our district. Our Economic Vitality Committee is now conducting downtown business surveys of all 111 businesses in the district. It's creating a really new approach to how we collect data. So we're going to have a lot more really neat data to share with you guys. And in reporting, Mark does give some really awesome updates to the council each meeting, and I appreciate you for doing that. But I would like to make it a personal goal to come in quarterly and report to you guys of events we have coming up, what we have achieved, and then we'll look at some stronger data in the annual reports. But I would like to be more in touch with you guys and let you guys know what we have going on regularly. So Main Street has, oh, sorry. In 2023, Main Street volunteers contributed over 1,800 hours from events to meetings to additional meetings, community cleanups, everything. And that number is really impressive to us. And I, looking at our data from this year, it's going to far surpass that number. We welcomed over 15,000 visitors to the district through our events and programming, and our staff provided 135 hours of technical assistance to our businesses. A really neat form of technical assistance that we began offering last year was a marketing analysis, and we love promoting our businesses, but we want to give them tools to promote themselves better. And at a state coordinating event, we were able to get in touch with a member of Main Street America, and they are going to implement our marketing analysis that was created right here in Greensburg and give it as a toolkit to Main Streets all across the country. So we are very proud to be an author on a toolkit item that will be implemented nationally. Some other really cool, big wins. Our 2023 farmer's market season set new organization records for the most vendors in the season, the most vendor average per market, and the most kid coupons redeemed. We give away dollar coupons to every child that attends the market in partnership with the Community Foundation. It's really neat to see who spends it the day of or who saves it up and buys something larger. Our fundraiser Market to Meal returned in 2023 with roaring success. This elevated dining experience takes place in what will become Ally 1822. It features ingredients sourced from our farmer's market, and this year we're going to have acoustic music and a silent auction with a guest appearance from Hoosier micro-influencer Nate Spinkel. So that is coming up in August. Our Small Business Saturday event in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce resulted in $12,000 being spent locally. And our 2023 Holiday Walk had over 4,200 attendees with the largest amount of business participation and parade entries. And since we're already six months into 2024, I kind of want to brag about our most recent accomplishment. In March, Main Street Greensburg was awarded $25,000 from Honda to launch an interior renovation grant program. And last week, we requested and were awarded an additional $25,000 from the city's redevelopment commission. So this program will allow building owners or tenants to make improvements. It awards up to $9,000 with only a 10% match. So we're really excited to see what kind of impact that's going to make in our downtown district and continue our efforts in historic preservation. So last year was a huge year for collaborations for Main Street Greensburg, my favorite being the DORA, the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. We can't thank our partners enough, including the city, for letting us have a seat at tables for projects so much bigger than our capacity and giving us and our business owners a voice in these projects. So some of these collaborations include DORA, the project at 132 through 134 North Franklin, the launch of the Love Local Community Gift Card in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, Yodle Community Calendar as part of the Stellar Team, Ally 1822 with the Bicentennial Committee, the Franklin Street Streetscape Project, and the Earth Day Community Cleanup in partnership with the Health Department and the Parks Department, and Decatur County Recycling. So moving forward, our goal is to become nationally accredited. Everything we are doing at this moment, we are looking at our work plans, what we're doing currently, what we can remove from our efforts, and what we can strengthen to get that national accreditation. The most important thing is we want to say thank you to everyone, community members, volunteers, sponsors, the city of Greensburg for continuing to support us. Next year will be 20 years of our organization, and we just continue to grow and expand. Does anyone have any questions about anything?
Oh, man.
Yes, sir.
The Ally project on the south side of the square, I had the opportunity to use that today to go to the parking. It's going to be a tremendous asset to the city to have that. I know the project is not complete, but I'm very proud and very happy with what's taken place thus far.
It absolutely will be. I'm so excited to see it completed.
You mentioned your occupancy was 79%. Do you know what the trend is there, like what it was a year ago, or?
Last year it was 85%.
Okay, so it's went down a little.
It has gone down. We've had some vacancies come up under new ownerships. We're working to, with our Economic Vitality Committee, to work with the Small Business Development Association in business recruitment for businesses that we have data that the community and stakeholders would like to see and hopefully get those storefronts to.
Any other questions for Ally? Thanks, Ally, for all of your hard work and dedication to our core of the community. Thanks. Okay, Zach, you, you have a couple items. 2024-11 is first.
You do, Council. Ordinance 22.4-11 is an amendment to our existing parking chapter in our ordinances, and I will pass the rest of that off to Chris because it becomes a bunch of legal jargon.
It's really great. It's good. You guys should just pass it.
That's the guy who wrote it.
Yeah, it's a guy who wrote it. Trust me, it's all good.
Essentially, it's raising our current parking fees from $10 to $25, and then ties some more stuff together.
Yeah, so we had a couple of different things. One, we have a, we had some language in the ordinance as it currently existed that didn't specifically say you can't park where it says don't park. So one of the things that we added in this, so specifically in 2024-11 is addressing some modifications to specifically 72.01, which is an existing ordinance, and linking it to Chapter 75, which is Schedule V, or Schedule VI, so six. So essentially, the idea is if we're going to identify some places that we say you can't park, there needs to be an associated penalty, a penalty associated with that to aid in enforcement. There is currently a violation fee of $10, but that was, that was passed in, I believe, '78. So I mean, it's, it's been a minute since it's been updated. So I think we raised that to link it to, to be 25, which is really just, I mean, not even quite class of violation. I mean, it's just, it's still not a substantial fine for your cause, but it's at least something that can be a deterrent to be pointed to. And, and again, in reading 72.01, I didn't feel like there was a specific sentence that says it is actually unlawful to park a vehicle where it has been designated as no parking. So, and I know that sort of, I mean, it seems elementary, but in my world, if you don't have a sentence that says that, it doesn't apply. So, so that's what the intention of 24-11 is, was to add to 72.01, I added subsection C, which provides that it shall be unlawful for the operator of any vehicle to stop, stand, or park such vehicle in any area designated as no parking by either posted signage from the City of Greensburg or by inclusion in Schedule VI of Chapter 75 of Title VII of the City of Greensburg Code Of Ordinances. And that is the, the specific schedule where we have listed and identified all areas of the city that have been deemed no parking. And then I also added to 7299, I just amended it to add it from, to take it from $10 to $25. So that's, that's the intention of that, that ordinance. And it's, it is still considered a Class D violation of the City of Greensburg Code Of Ordinances. So it did not change the level of the violation, it just increased the. So it did not change the level of the violation. It just increased the fee associated with it. And I would, given the fact that there is an increase to a fine-for-your-cost, I would suggest, I do not believe you can, I do not believe you can suspend the rules.
Why are you looking at me when you say that?
I'm looking at that, and I actually apologize because I looked at that way the whole time. So do you guys have any questions or anything you need to know about it?
So it says that either posted signage or, I'm assuming this is that somebody knows how to get to the, the Chapter Seventy-five title.
It's available online. It is part of the, is part of the City of Greensburg ordinances.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is are, is there signage on all the places that are supposed to be no parking?
Well, I suspect that the answer to that question is going to be no, because that's why we put them in the schedule. So, and you guys vote on the schedule. I mean, that's the second amendment. That's the next ordinance that you're actually going to talk about is adding some property to that schedule. But the intention behind the schedule is that it exists and there would be, you know, there's a place where they can go and look if they're not supposed to park.
We have signs for the new streets that we're getting added to the schedule and some extra signs. There are signs out there that are posted on, I wouldn't say all these streets because I didn't look at all of them, but I know we looked at East Street. There are signs up and down East Street, so.
Yellow curbing or something to indicate you shouldn't park there?
I mean, me as a citizen, I wouldn't have it, if it doesn't say no parking, then I'm assuming it's free for all. I mean, unless it's a yellow curb or if it's a, unless there's a sign there. I don't, how do you know?
Well, I was gonna say, I would suspect, and again, I'm Zach. I have a driver. I don't look to all of the various places that are listed on the schedule. But I would anticipate some form of indication that you shouldn't park there. And obviously, I suppose if someone came in and they had an issue with a violation on a park that was on the schedule but not necessarily identified as, I mean.
I don't think it's Chief McGeeley's intention right now to go around and write parking tickets on places that aren't signed. If he knows that there are no parking areas and he sees a car there, it might write a warning, letting no.
And I would also say, I think that every parking location that is indicated in that schedule has been brought to at least a public meeting before it is added to that schedule. So, I mean, so generally speaking, if there was an area that wasn't previously, I mean, certainly on the newest ones, I think, yeah, you put up a no parking sign. I think the old ones all probably have a no parking sign. But it is quite common in the law for there to be a list, like a schedule of, hey, this is the stuff that you can't do. And I agree with you. I think a citizen, it's like, well, I didn't do a look at the law, but ignorance of the law is generally not a defense to violating the law. So that'd be my really legal answer for it. But.
As per our meeting last week, the intent is there will be signage letting people know that there is no parking in that particular area.
I agree. And what I'll say, just from a drafting perspective, I wanted, there was nothing that linked Chapter Seventy-five to the no parking ordinance. And that was one of the reasons why I wanted to amend this, because I didn't want somebody to get, why did you know Chapter Seventy-five existed? So this way, if you're educating yourself, you're looking about the rules on no parking, you can see that it is specifically linked. So that's why I wanted that language added to the ordinance.
I think we could, we could go through, because I pulled up Seventy-five to look at it. We can go through and make sure that those that are listed, because we sort of did this in our traffic meeting, but I don't know that we definitely didn't touch on every one of them. But we can do that. But then this also allows if others need to be put up, they can be. And then we can go through the process of adding them to the table if they want or if we want to. So we can, we can take a look at that because, see, some of them, because they have the ordinance number, some of them date back twenty-plus years.
Well, I would hope that the list that, you know, that doesn't have the, if there's no sign on it, places that you're not supposed to park, I'm assuming that that list would, I would hope that that list would be quite small.
Yeah, I would think it would be. Most of it's downtown in general.
I'll make a motion. We pass twenty-two four dash eleven on the first reading.
Certainly.
Motion's been made, but Jamie, sick, Mike, Kevin, all those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Let's do twenty-four twelve.
So ordinance twenty-four twelve kind of came about, we had some concerns from people in Rolling Meadows area on some of their streets of cars parking on both sides of the streets and making it difficult to pass through. Upon investigation, there's three of those streets in that subdivision that are twenty-four foot wide from back a curb to back a curb, which you put two cars out there and then try to get more cars to go through there. Obviously, it does create a hazard essentially. And discussions with the street department, fire department, police department, they also have issues getting through there with as many cars as parked on those streets because you have houses with smaller driveways, narrow streets. Or more often than not, cars, houses nowadays have more than two cars, unfortunately. Obviously, they're going to be parked on the street. So we looked at those three, which is Trimble and Meyer to Cole. And then with those discussions with everybody, figured out there's a few more streets on the other side of four twenty-one in that subdivision on Neiman and Oakmont that are also narrow streets. So this ordinance restricts parking on one side or other of the street. It's all based on whether the fire hydrants or mailboxes are on the streets. So if the mailboxes are on one side, that side dictates no parking that way. USPS can still deliver mail. That is the five streets that adds, gets added to Chapter Seventy-five as Schedule VI to be included into the no parking restrictions. And as stated before, those signs have been ordered to be placed out there. If the council so chooses to pass this ordinance on the first reading, people living on those streets will be sent a letter giving them notice of this coming and ask for any opinions prior to the second reading in July.
Have a public hearing.
I think you'll have a public hearing. It just allows those people to voice concerns ahead of the meeting.
You have to send the street.
All the housing in that area has ample parking for their particular residents?
They have a driveway, so we can't control whether they have three, four, or five cars.
Are sidewalks in that area?
Any west edge there are?
There is.
Is there, is there a ordinance against parking on their sidewalk in front of their house?
There is.
Anything else for Zach? Not but entertain a motion to pass twenty-four dash twelve on first reading. Motion's been made by, by Anna. Second, second of mine, Mark. All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thanks, Zach. Mark, do you want to give us a quick update on heavy trash, please?
Good evening. I apologize. Information is in your package. I did privacy bills, Decatur bills, and best way and time to get it to you in the package, so I'm just going to relay it. In May of twenty twenty-three, we had a reasonable amount of heavy trash. We picked up approximately two hundred and fifty thousand pounds in the five-day period this past May, the just concluded. That increased by about sixty thousand pounds to just over three hundred and ten thousand pounds of traction that we could have five days. We had a few more instances of where people put out things they weren't supposed to, or large quantities thereof. And we left, I think, twenty or twenty-two piles. The following week, there was not a single one of them left to the curbside, so we didn't have to deal with that going forward. We talked about the Board of Works meeting, kind of a discussion about eliminating one of our heavy trash pickups and go to just one annually. We're going to go ahead and do it in August, and I'll report back to them at that time how the volumes are. And then they'll decide to get a plan, just to let them know that it won't be happening in the future if that's what they choose to go.
Has it always been that close together in a three-month span or is it?
Yes, for at least the last eight to ten years.
Do that so that you still have summer help?
That's the main reason we do it, to have enough manpower to get it accomplished.
You used to do it in October, though, right?
It used to be in April and September. It's never been as late as October, but it was in September. And I believe it was changed in two thousand and sixteen is when it was changed.
Any other questions for Mark on that? Perfect. Thanks. Thank you. Jamie, you want to give us an update from the board?
Board of Works meeting tonight. We had the Verdas group update that we got tonight for the council meeting. And we did some street closures for the fair parade, for the Fourth of July parade, and for the, for the basically safety community, public safety community cookouts. We made a conditional offer of employment to three different people for the police department. We promoted a probationary firefighter promotion from probationary firefighter. Donna came, and we approved the expense for utility rate study. So more to come. We'll probably see that here in a few months, the results of that coming. We approved a sewer leak adjustment. Zeke came with wastewater, and we approved basically an amendment number one for a task order and a change order number two. And then Zach gave an update for Franklin Street and Mark gave an update for heavy trash.
Mark?
Everything Ally said. No. Market to Meal is coming up.
August seventeenth.
August seventeenth. Tickets are on sale now. Get those online. It's fifty dollars a plate. I was thinking that, right? I didn't attend the last meeting, but I'm going off memory. Did we do downtown cleanup? Did we do that? Okay, yeah, that's about it. And then everything she said.
One other thing that's happening this Saturday is Friends of Fred Food Truck Festival. It's going to be out at Rebecca Park. That is kind of a joint partnership this year between Main Street and Visit Greensburg. So six fifty north is the first band at five, and then Midnight Rider, which is an Omen Brother Band, is at seven. So it's a summer concert series and the Friends of Fred Food Truck smash together, which should be a lot of fun. And I know Ally and her team have been working really well to get that done too, so. And the markets, the farmers market's back and open, so. Kevin? Gerald?
He's not developed, has not met, but I would let you know that there is a workforce development announcement, meeting tomorrow at, here in City Hall at one o'clock. So encourage anybody to attend that.
Should be a great opportunity. It's put on by the Southeastern Indiana Workforce Development Commission Committee. It's called JAG, the Jobs for Americans graduates, and the Greensburg and Decatur County schools have come on board with that, which I think takes our region to, all schools in the region our participating are pretty close to. And some of our local corporate partners have worked on that. Brian and Jess Barker have really been spearheading it, so we're very fortunate to get to host that. And so hopefully we'll have a good turnout. Everyone is welcome to attend. Brian, did I miss anything on that? Perfect. Rodney?
Ninety-one one meeting is tomorrow.
Solid waste?
They did their, they did rain barrel. They had twenty-five people for their, their rain barrels to make their rain barrels. She talked about doing that again. They're gearing up for the fair. They are doing the environmental day camp. They've got a hundred and eighteen kids signed up for that camp. That's actually, that's, that happened last weekend, so hopefully that worked out well. And then, did you, the August twenty-first, is that COVA fertilizer is going to do a chemical? You can take pesticides to COVA, and they will dispose of them for you. So if anybody knows of somebody that would benefit from that, that's.
It's sort of a tox-away day for pesticides and unlinked.
It's kind of nice, but that's not going to end up, you know, in hard tox-away, hopefully. I don't know how, I've not seen it publicized, so I don't know how, you know, how many people know about it. Oh, and they're talking about, they're tossing around a community garden with the Board of Health.
Any questions? Durrell's not here this evening. Redevelopment Commission did approve the sale of one of their parcels to a private business for full asking price, which is great, out of veterans' way. So hopefully we'll see some growth in that capacity. They also approved entering into contract negotiations with Ironman Properties to do the downtown apartment development, market rate units on the old jail lot that they purchased earlier this year. So they've been pretty active. They, Liberty Lake's housing subdivision is underway. They are moving Durrell. They're working on infrastructure sometime soon, but there's a lot of Durrell moving around out there. So if you haven't been by to see that, please do so. So they've been pretty active, but those were their kind of three big items. The only one on here that I don't think we've hit, Board of Aviation. Obviously, that last week, they did have a pretty good update. They have a July eleventh fly for the instrument approaches from the FAA, so that will be the final process in their opening for instrument landing for corporate jets and jet traffic. So that's a big step in the right direction. They have built a building out there to store some of their equipment in, and that is getting the final touches finished on it as well. Few other random things. As a reminder, tomorrow is the first community cookout. Thursday? It is Wednesday today. Thursday is the first cookout. It is out in West Ridge, which is sort of like behind the movie theaters over by the Greensburg Community School Corporate Building. Hopefully, you'll be able to join us. Fire Department's going to make dinner, and it should be a lot of fun. It's the first one of the year. We only have three of these this year, the way the calendar falls. So please come out and join us. Anyone and everyone is welcome. As mentioned, Saturday is the Friends of Fred Food Truck Festival, and the concert series kicks off. And then Saturday morning is the Mayor's Youth Council's five K color run. And they were here a couple of months ago and talked to the Board of Works about that. Should be a great opportunity. Last time I heard, they had quite a few people signed up for that. So it should be a great event. That's start registration at nine, kickoff's at ten. Anyone is welcome to attend that. It is free of charge. And they are going to take over that part of the park in the morning, and then we're going to transition. So it's going to be a very busy day on the east side of town. Any questions? If not, take a motion to adjourn.
First, real quick, Mayor, I would like to publicly recognize the passing of Merrill Smith and what a huge person he was to everything in this community, especially the Tree City Fall Festival. He was our parade chair, and we have very, very large shoes to fill in this community. If anybody would like to help, step, step up to help with the parade or the fall festival, come and see me, because it's going to be huge to fill in. So that's it.
Thanks for making that point. Anything else? But that's just a couple of us. Yep. Motion to adjourn? Motion's been made by Anna. All those in favor, sing if I'm saying aye. Those opposed? Thanks, everyone.